Please join me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In attendance tonight, we have Martina Witz, Robert Fogg, Marty Zartarian, myself Doug Bogdan, Kathleen Eddie from the Assistant to Planning and Code Enforcement, and Kathy Tomorelli, our municipal planner. And there's our six o'clock bell. I think they can hear me over that, so. Item two eight, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with items brought before the board tonight?
I'm good, no.
Nope, that's four negative. Okay, we move on to item three is the review of the meeting minutes from March, I'm sorry, May 6, 2025.
Marty sent some.
I said something.
Yeah, fractions.
Yeah, fractions are made, okay. Couple of fractions that we saw.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Marty and a second by Martina to approve the minutes for May 6, 2025, all in favor? Five zero, thank you. With the edits that Marty made. We're gonna move on to old business, item number four, that appeared before the subdivision sketch plan on January 21, 2025. It's a request, a request by Andrew Jarvis, represented by RPEX Consulting for preliminary plan review for a major subdivision application for a 12 lot, single-family residential subdivision to be located off Sebago Road, as shown on map lot R05/24 in the rural zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Yeah, as you noted, it's the Ruvenmere subdivision, we've named it now, on Ruvenmere Drive, across from, it'll be across from the entrance to Clarendt Road. And we're here tonight to seek preliminary approval in your commentary before we finalize the plans. As it stands right now, the DEP is reviewing our application for stormwater permit, and we're awaiting comment on that. Our initial meeting with them was fruitful, and we believe that that is well on its way. And since our last, since the sketch plan review, we incorporated the comments provided at sketch plan to provide 10% open space for the ordinance, and to incorporate a cistern that I worked with the fire chief to locate in size, he's happy with that. Same with the turnout, he was happy with that. So yeah, that's where we're at, at this moment.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so cistern was one of the last things you just mentioned, and it was one of the other questions about. It's usually a letter that we receive from the fire chief? And I saw the emails back and forth, but I didn't see like an acceptance letter.
I requested the letter, I didn't receive it, so I included the email.
Thank you. Thank you Kathy.
While around the cistern, just something to look forward to is to have a maintenance plan for the cistern as well?
Okay.
For the final plan.
What else do we have for questions?
Was there a note on the plan that the road would remain private? I know we had asked about that.
It will remain private, I don't remember if.
We had asked to have a note on the plan that actually.
Those are all on the very end of the memo, the additional things that need to be added, which can be included for final plan. I did note that on there, plan notes at the end. And I can work with them to make sure that we get all the plan notes prior to final.
There were, there were a list of waivers that we requested?
Yep, so if you look at the memo, I started with preliminary plan showing the submittals that were received. And then I had the discussion items, and the first of which is the waiver requests.
So I had a question about the driveway waiver, I thought we could not waive driveway.
What do you mean?
Isn't that what came back and bite us on the CN Brown, because it's under the, isn't?
An entranceway?
An entranceway or a driveway, that was, that's under the purview of the road commissioner versus the town manager.
Yeah, there was an issue because it varied from the width that was required in our ordinance versus what MDOT required. What is the width of your driveway opening?
Uh, it's 20 feet.
So he meets it, he meets our driveway ordinance. But that is a good point.
Because we're not the ones that give the permit, so we shouldn't be the ones that are waiving.
It's DOT, that he, he'll get his permit, his driveway permit from DOT, because in the town of Naples, any state road, DOT does the driveway entrance, any public road, such as like the road behind us or something, Steve or Randy would be the ones to sign off on the driveway entrance permit, that's how we do it.
Right, I've just been questioning whether or not we have the authority to waive something that we don't administer.
I think that's a good point, I think that we probably should get a letter from the road commissioner regarding this. It's not something that would hold us up tonight, just because we just had a very bizarre situation. Typically, most towns, we defer to the MDOT for their jurisdiction. But we had a conflict between our ordinance and the MDOT, and a, someone appealed the decision based on that conflict. So I think we should check to make sure there are no conflict, conflicts, and then ask for a letter from the road commissioner. So I think that one, we should probably wait on until we make sure, just to make sure we don't run into issues.
Can you put me in contact with road commissioner?
I can do that, it's actually the town manager here. So that's a good pickup, Martina, I agree. The second waiver, the impact on town, we discussed that at the last meeting, though that was something that you guys have not been requiring, the school and all of those calculations. And then the other ones, you certainly should discuss.
Could I ask a question about the landscaping plan?
Sure.
I know we had, so you're building the homes, or some will be on, I rewatched the movie, because it was six months ago.
It was a movie.
It was. Because I couldn't recall what we had discussed, but you're building some houses on spec and some as, what is the criteria?
We have the developer here today, so I actually got to refer to Andy, what's your, what's your plan for build out?
So I guess the plan is mostly, so I can start? Plan is to start mostly with spec, and then if some gets old throughout the process, then, so, so mostly on spec.
So I'm just envisioning, I mean, we're not asking for landscaping on the individual land, on the plots, on the sites, I'm just wondering, and I guess maybe my answer will come to me when we do the sidewalk, I just don't know what the edges of the road are going to look like, if you're gonna leave, if you're going to be leaving vegetation, or is it, is there going to be a need for landscaping? Or the entrance, like the sides of this new road, what will that look like? Will that need to be landscaped, or I don't know how it's going to look.
My opinion, no, but, you know, I think that's subjective. The, the reason that I've tried to not have a landscape plan is because we're building on spec and slash potential custom homes is, and the, we have a limitation on the amount of vegetation we can clear under our stormwater permit. So we're requiring that on a 40,000 square foot lot, that the, there's no more than 12,500 square feet of landscape area and 1,750 square feet of driveway area. So the remainder, if it's cleared for construction, any remainder still has to be revegetated, and I'm calling for a metal mix, you know, that would be no more than twice a year. So that would be the extent of the landscaping that we're prescribing. As far as plantings, if there's plantings that you feel need to be for screening, then we can discuss that, but in my opinion, there's not much to screen, just because we're, there is gonna be remaining trees and vegetation between the road itself, you know, Sebago Road, and the first lots, and the stormwater pond. And there'll be substantial vegetation between the existing lot line and where we plan to build the houses, in most cases, so.
And you're not building any kind of, like, some subdivisions have like a stone wall with the name of the subdivision, like a decorative feature? Or is that in the plan?
You don't really do that, right?
Because I'm thinking if you did that, that would probably need some landscaping, but that's not what's happening here. Okay, thanks.
Would you like to have a note, though, as to what is gonna be cleared and not cleared?
So there will be additional notes, these plans were submitted at the beginning of May, and the final pass through with DEP was done after that, and the plans are actually slightly updated. So you'll be able to, on the new plans, there'll be notes indicating the area that will be cleared for construction, and then the areas that are expected to be revegetated during construction, and then a note depicting that there's a limit to declaring that the individual lot owner will be allowed if it's, if it's not built on spec.
I think we had discussed going on a sidewalk at that last meeting, and I think some of this will be more clear when we actually see it, so.
What's the timeframe on a sidewalk?
Typically, we do them before final plan, we do it usually the same night, but we could schedule it for, for example, the next meeting is light, so we could schedule it for the 7th, is it 17th, I believe? Yeah, we could do that as well, if you're ready.
Do you need the lot lines delineated by the surveyor?
We would, we would need at least a stake or something in the middle of each lot, that's up to them, what they want to see. But some delineation, so they can tell where they are on the plan, I would think.
I can tell you, you're probably not gonna walk past the fourth or fifth lot in that site, unless you want to walk out covered in black tick.
Okay, so another question would be, when do you anticipate you'll be ready for final?
So.
I know it's a guess.
It depends on, it depends on if you're going to require the stormwater permit as a condition of approval, or if you need it prior to approval.
Gotcha.
It's typically a condition of approval.
Okay, if it's a condition of approval, then I want to double check my notes, but it could be, it could be within the, you know, either the next meeting or the following meeting.
It would have to be the following.
Right, because I would have needed that material.
Oh yes.
28 deadly daylet deadline, so it would be the two meetings out.
So maybe just one July.
Yeah. It would.
You'd have to actually discuss the July meetings, because of last year, with just that, everybody vacationing and that stuff. That was a tough one to have the first week of July.
And the site will be not in any different than it is now, between now and that July meeting, I'm guessing, you're not.
What do you mean?
Could you, could you have, could it be easier for them to see anything out there?
I mean, in the middle of summer, it's gonna be well vegetated.
The cistern's up at the end, right, so we won't see without.
Yeah, so as far as this goes, I myself, it's pretty easy to walk in here, in this area, and probably to about EA area or so, it gets pretty, there's not a lot of cleared area, and it gets fairly thick beyond that. So we actually, we actually did all of our survey by drone on this one.
When do you start to feel the elevation go up, at what point?
You start to feel real elevation go up in this area here.
I mean, walking in as far as we can, I think is helpful.
Yes, certainly see the entrance in the first, you know, first couple of lots to get a feel for.
See from the road and stuff, yeah. And plus it has the benefit that other people can come, I feel, because last time, there were some people here that had questions, and I just feel like it's the old sidewalk, anyone can come.
I will, I'll get ahold of my surveyor and see when they could stake the lots for us, and that'll, that'll drive when we can have the, have the meeting.
Okay. All right, yes, the earliest one would be July 1st, if we have a quorum, and then the next available one would be July 15th.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that we're wanting to hold a public hearing at that meeting as well? So we'll schedule that as a public hearing.
Now, would you want to do the sidewalk on the 17th anyway? Or, or do you just want to combine it with the next meeting?
You want to combine it?
I don't care.
Yeah, I think combining would be better.
So when you're ready, for, when we're ready, whether it's the 1st or the 15th, we'll do a straw poll at the end of this meeting about the July meeting and see what the availability is, and then we'll follow up with the people that aren't here.
Sure.
And then we can let you know whether it's the 1st or the 15th.
Okay.
For your final plan review, and we'll schedule the sidewalk probably for about 4:30, 4:45?
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in that range, prior to that meeting, because it's gonna take a little bit longer than our last sidewalk did, I think, just because of the nature of the, well, although it could take less if we don't walk very far in, so 4:45 probably.
We'll have to check out.
Yeah. So, so 4:45 before one of those two meetings, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. All right. And is you, will you follow up with the fire chief about the letter of the cistern?
I will do that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And we can touch bases on the driveway entrance permit, or the lack of needing one, with some sort of letter from the road commissioner saying that it's not applicable, but it does meet the standards, because we do not do driveway entrance permits for private roads, for each individual driveway. But from the main road, we would if it was not MDOT jurisdiction, but just because of our past experience recently, we want to make sure that we have something from him in writing.
Gotcha. And the waiver for sidewalks, I didn't see that sidewalks would be of value in this, in this application.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree.
There's no sidewalks on Sebago Road, so.
No. That would be a sidewalk from nowhere.
That means they'd have to contribute to sidewalk.
Not in, not in the zoning district, that's only, that's only applicable to the commercial zoning district.
Thank you, Robert, I have to ask that same question. Did you want to waive the landscaping?
Oh.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I agree, yeah, I want to see the notes on what's, what's gonna be cleared and how it's gonna be replaced.
I would anticipate that would be pretty intensive notes because of the DEP permit, there's gonna be a lot of known clearing, and those will have to be delineated prior to construction, clearing of the lots, yeah, and in the deeds as well.
Just curious, I've noticed that they're all three-bedroom homes, is that what you're looking to build?
What we've submitted was a smattering of the homes that Andy typically builds, which seem to be often three-bedroom.
They're three-bedroom homes, that's your idea, okay.
I don't know if there's a logic to that or not, maybe that's a better question for him.
And are they gonna be with garage, all of them? Sorry, Andy.
Yeah, I plan to put a garage on pretty much every style, and let's, I think in the covenants, we will require a garage.
Garage, okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, I'm not opposed to doing two or four, but it's just, most of the stuff we do ends up being three bedrooms, so.
Okay. And no plans for ADU type of construction?
No.
Okay, and will that be in the covenants, that there will not be ADUs, attached ADUs allowed?
We can, I, I guess I never have in some of the other stuff we've done, but, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna need to be specific about that because of the state's affordable housing.
Okay.
We are technically required to allow them on any lot that there's a single-family dwelling unit, unless you do private covenants as the developer, and that would need to be on the final plan. I just added that as a number six, as he was talking for next meeting, if you want that on there.
But that's not a requirement.
No, that's correct, he can decide, you need to decide.
Yeah.
Whether or not you want people to be allowed to put an accessory dwelling unit or not. It's gonna be hard with your stormwater plan, though, because of the clearing, to actually do that anyway, so, but to have the discussion.
I think the, the way an ADU would come into play on a project like this is, you know, within the designated or the rough area that we've had for a building envelope, if somebody chose to build a smaller house, or a taller house, and then later add an ADU, that's where it would come into play.
But then their septic would have to be large.
Their septic would have to, but that's part of the building permit and car process, it wouldn't affect, impact this. But it's something to talk about before final, if you want to add any thing in your HOA, your deeds, and those on the plan. It needs to be really specific, I mean, it used to be it was sufficient, all lots are intended for single-family dwelling only, that doesn't cut it anymore, because the ADU is considered an accessory, not an actual dwelling unit, it's an accessory to the single family. So that's a discussion for you guys, and how it's gonna work, given the building envelopes that you have, and whether or not that's something you want to allow.
Do you have to specify it either way, or only if you're not going to allow them?
Only if it's not, only if it's not allowed, because we cannot not allow it unless that's there. And that may get challenged at some point, but for right now, that is the, the ruling, is that if you put private covenants on there, then we can respect those. Something to think about, don't have to answer that question tonight.
There was an ordinance in there about additional engineering of water supply, is that something that you're gonna require, or no? Our opinion was it's in the residential district, so we were under the, under the assumption that, you know, water, water is adequate in that area to serve.
And everyone will have their own drawled wells.
Everyone will have their own drawled well, yeah.
I don't have a problem waiving that, but how do we really know? We never really evaluated the aquifers, right, I mean, how do we?
I think for this, this particular subdivision, I wouldn't be too concerned about that, they do have a well and septic layout plan showing approximately where the well and septic systems will be. I think it's an appropriate waiver in this situation.
So this doesn't, this doesn't address quantity of water available, is that what you're saying? This is just for my own understanding, I don't really, because, is that what this, is that what this line of the ordinance addresses? That we need to make, we're saying.
In the short, yeah, for the short definition, is that is there adequate water, not for private protection, but total water supply, basically.
Well, it's Maine, I guess there's a lot of water.
True baby's row.
It's not Nevada. I just wanted to understand, actually, what that actually was asking us, we don't, we really don't know, but, okay. It's reasonable to assume there's adequate water.
I mean, if we're gonna put a fire pump for an apartment building on there.
Yeah.
That would be different.
That would be something else. So whether they're all single-family homes, they're all gonna have their own well, that should be fine. Go back to four, because I think we skipped over street trees and esplanades was one of the waivers that was also asked for.
So I don't have a problem.
We have no esplanades, and the, the storm drained, the stormwater management pretty much takes care of the entire right of way.
Right next to the road.
Yeah.
I remember that from the plans from last time, so, you guys okay with that, Robert?
I kind of look at it, this is the dead end of private road, if this were something that, that other people were going to be seeing, that that might be something to consider, but. So I think what I'm hearing is that you guys are good with two through six, one, we're going to deal with in a different way. So I think we're at the point of, of maybe a motion on those items.
I make a motion that we grant the waivers. Two, on construction maintenance, impact on the town. Number three, landscaping plan, number four, street trees and esplanades, number five, sidewalks, and number six, water supply, additional engineering.
Yeah, I'll second that.
A motion to waive those five waivers, and a second by Marty, all in favor? Four, four zero, thank you.
Do we need a separate motion for number one, that you're gonna address that in a different way, or?
I don't think so, because we're gonna have a submittal for that. And technically, because it's a state road, you don't need to do that technically, so I think we're good on that one. We're just gonna cross our t's and dot our i's, so we don't run into the same issue. So in my draft motion for preliminary plan approval, I kind of incorporated completeness in that motion, if you noticed, on number three, that with the granting of the above waivers, the planning board finds the preliminary ribbon more, ribbon near subdivision plan is complete. So I incorporated it into the draft motion for preliminary plan, if you would like to pull that out and do that separately, you could.
Is there anything else you want to tell us on your diagrams or anything, on your plans, before we?
I brought the, the plan for your benefit, I mean, any questions that you have, I'm happy to address.
That's the same plan we have right here.
Could we maybe go over the additional submittals real quick, and then talk about that, is that okay? So I had put in there the one thing that we really would like to know ahead of time, and it's part of our ordinance, is the performance guarantees. And it's super important for the town of Naples.
And the options there are?
A letter of credit, bond, or cash escrow. We don't have any provisions for phasing, but we can return portions of that escrow as the project gets complete. If we have, like, for example, an inspection from your engineer saying that the road has been built to whatever standard, then we could reduce that with a request from you. We don't have a provision for phasing, but we can return as you finish the project. Or reduce the amount of the bond, for example. Obviously, we need the, I believe this is the one that the draft documents for HOA were just an example, so we're gonna need those. We already talked about, talking about to the road commissioner about the driveway entrance, we can also talk about the road name and E911 compliance for that, at that time, we might as well just get it all at once, to make sure that ribbon, I think it's Ruvenmere Way, is that the?
Ruvenmere Drive.
Drive, yeah, check to make sure that meets E911. The town road entrance permit, we've already talked about that, the letter for the fire chief I'm working on, and then I have the question, is anything else required by the planning board?
Maintenance plan for the cistern.
Okay.
Yep, I got that.
And that would be part of the HOA docs.
Will the stormwater? Best management practices, I don't want us to call, or how will they be maintained?
So the, the, the individual stormwater permit that will obtain for the site requires us to provide the HOA with a maintenance and inspection plan, as well as a housekeeping plan, and specific to the best management practices that we employed on the site, so the filter pond and the buffers, the specific management of those. So that will be passed along, and the responsibility of maintaining that permit will be passed along to the HOA as well.
How, when, at what point, or how many homes have to be there before that actually gets passed off to them? I mean, so I'm not, it's not like, this whole thing is done at one time, but the stormwater has to be in place before everything's finished.
I think it's seven percent.
Yeah, so the, the construction of the site will be, you were planning to phase this, you were planning to build it as one, right? So we plan to build the roadway as one, and the infrastructure as one, in one effort. And the infrastructure as one, in one effort, and then fall back in populated sites. So, and until everything is stabilized, temporary erosion control will be in place.
But so as far as, the association needs, will have to expend funds eventually to maintain this, but what if it takes a long time to sell all the homes and there's only three people that live there?
He owns all the lots and he's selling one at a time to individual buyers. So he's responsible for the remaining lots.
He's responsible until such a time as the association is formed, what seventy-five percent or whatever that is, and then it be, it gets transferred over to the HOA. But before it would be, before they would set up the HOA, the residents would expect that the infrastructure for the road and the stormwater would be completed.
Yes.
And the, the only thing, we can talk about this as we get to final, but the one thing the town's gonna be sticking around is that the, the cistern needs to be installed.
Right.
Before we start transferring.
Yes.
Otherwise, we'll get stuck with a, a cistern issue. So we can talk about how to deal with that at final, but the expectation is the cistern is gonna be in before CO is
CO on the first house.
First house. Otherwise, you, you retire to Florida or go bankrupt and then we're stuck putting in a cistern.
It's only fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's all about, yeah, yeah. So obviously, the, the bond would, would cover that, but we would prefer to have you install it. So before the issuance of the first CO, and I would take care of that as a condition of approval. And not that we've gotten burned before.
But other towns have.
So, yeah. I hear what you're getting at. How are we ensuring that the infrastructure is completed?
I was thinking, I asked earlier about a sign at the entrance, a rock wall or anything like that. Is there a sign for the entrance or just a street sign?
It's just a street sign.
We're okay with just a street sign?
In this particular case, yes. And then I had listed the plan notes about the underground electrical utilities are required. Fire protection is to be supplied by ten K fire cistern. My standard, all roads depicted on subdivision plan are to remain private, so there's no question that the town will be taking over this road. The subdivision name, obviously, on your final plan. And then if we have the road name ready, and I will also check with the assessor as far as the lot numbers. We'll try to get those to you to make sure that we can get those on the final plan as well. And then the ADU, if you guys decide to put that on there. Because there is, of course, there is a scenario where someone could put in, like you said, an ADU within the footprint of their house or above the garage or something like that. So you need to think about whether or not you want to restrict that or not. Obviously, it would still be restricted to the clearing area of your building envelopes. And that's all I have for this one. Should we make a motion for preliminary?
Preliminary approval. Sure. Want me to just go right through it?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so we'll, excuse me, we'll have, make a motion to approve the request for preliminary plan approval. The Rivenmere twelve-lot residential subdivision located off Sebago Road, map lot R 05 slash twenty-four in the Village zoning district with the following conditions.
I did put some placeholders in there for you guys, so you can either omit that or you could add the maintenance plan to one A.
Of the stormwater maintenance, maintenance?
I think it was the cistern maintenance.
The cistern, okay.
Cistern maintenance.
Okay, so it says the planning, planning board requires the following specific changes on the plan. So A will be the cistern, the maintenance of the cistern. Is there another one to put on that?
Because the stormwater was going to be part of it.
Stormwater is gonna be part of the conditional approval.
Yeah.
And the plan does say that there's gonna be underground utilities and the fire protection, and that the roads will be private. They must be added, that the private roads must be added to the final plan.
State isn't correct. It should be six, three on the next one.
Yep. It says six, three on mine.
Oh, isn't that weird?
So, and number two is at the sixth, at the June sixth, sorry, at the June third meeting, the planning board grant the following waivers for the provisions found in section one, zero, zero, seven, point one four, the Naples land use ordinance, specifically subdivision and general requirements.
So we have two through six up there. You could refer to those.
It's called two through six?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll put those as the waivers that were accepted and approved with two through six. And with the granting of, of the above waivers, two through six, the planning board finds that the preliminary Rivenmere subdivision plan is complete. And as far as it says, as your final plan, the applicant submit the cost estimate prepared to a consulting engineer for subdivision improvements and a proposed type of performance guarantees. That was something that you mentioned at the end of that, Kathy. So that was my motion.
Second.
My motion is second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Four zero, thank you.
Follow-up with you as soon as possible, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Item five is table business. There's none, so we'll move on to item six is new business. There's a, six A, it's a request by Wayne Dunbar for change of use, change of use application located at six ninety-two Roosevelt Trail, shown on map lot U zero two slash thirty-five in the Village zoning district. Mr. Dunbar.
Good evening, thank you.
Tell us a little bit what you plan on doing.
Um, splitting the building, so part of it stays commercial and part of it becomes residential. I'm planning to live there. And I wish I could tell you who's gonna be running the commercial part, but my broker is not bringing in hundreds. Tomorrow, there's a gaggle of people coming, so fingers crossed.
I have a question. What is the zone for lot three, Abutter?
That's a good question. I don't go off the top of my head. You're talking about the Abutter that's behind.
I believe it's residential.
I believe it's residential.
I wanna say it's residential, but it's in behind him.
Yeah. And across the way is commercial.
Yes.
And this is the first lot in Village. So I believe, I believe she's correct. It's residential. I think it only went one lot deep for the Village.
Okay.
We can, we can, she's gonna pull it up on the land use map and see, check that.
So with that, we have to have a fifty-foot buffer at that point.
So that's, that, I'm glad you asked that because, bless you.
Thank you.
The scope of this meeting, obviously, this was approved under an older ordinance.
Right.
A while ago. And it went through two, I think, iterations of site plan. And the use that was there before is obviously a commercial use, abutting a residential use. And at the time, there was no buffering requirement. What he is asking to do is change from the commercial professional office, basically, to mixed use. So he's asking to change the use. I think in this scenario, and this is for your discussion, that you're, actually, the existing office had, or the existing office had several offices, perhaps, I think it was twelve, is that correct?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty offices?
Twenty, twenty roofs.
So if you take a look at the impact to the Abutter, you're putting the residential use closer to the residential use, and you're gonna be having a heck of a lot less people parking there, and less customers or, or clients, if you will, than you would have had before. So I, I did put that as a discussion item, but I think that you need to take a look at the property when it was approved and see what the practical situation is in this scenario. When you come in for a modification of an existing site plan, you are basically just looking at the change that was proposed and the intensity of that change. That doesn't mean you can't apply the new standards, but the scope of the review is a little bit narrower.
So in this case, there's a, an approximate location of a leach field for a septic system?
The septic system is already.
It's already in place?
It's in place.
And it's sufficient, I don't know what the requirements are for a, a mixed use requirement.
It is, it is going to be less because that was calculated for, we already did this exercise, but that would be part of the building permitting process. That would determine how many bedrooms, what the internal layout could be, how many offices they could have. But this was designed for, I believe it was fifteen employees. So you're going to be reducing the number likely of employees and then accommodating a two-bedroom. But the flow, I believe, was sufficient for what he was proposing to do right now. Now, that being said, what's the, what's the realtor gonna bring for that use on the front? So what we're looking to do is change from a commercial, or I'm sorry, a professional office to mixed use. If you look at the definition of mixed use, the uses that would be allowed in the front would be consistent with any of the uses that are allowed in that zoning district. If he comes back with a renter that wants to do something wildly different than a professional office, the code officer and myself would take a look at that and say, mm, wait, you, you may not have sufficient septic for that. What has been described is an office at this point. But remember, in mixed use, any of those that are allowed could be the commercial use potentially.
So the, the root of my question is, is how is the septic system gonna be evaluated that is sufficient for a one-bedroom house?
Yeah, it's based on the flow. Yeah, it's based on.
And based on the commercial use of the property.
Right. So they will, there'll be, right now, the calculation is just for the office use of fifteen employees.
Right.
There's a flow of X amount of gallons. There's a minimum flow, if it's for a three-bedroom house, it's ninety gallons per bedroom.
Right.
So if he's got two bedrooms, it would be a hundred and eighty, plus whatever is needed for those offices. Right now, what's needed for the offices is more than that.
Than the addition of the two bedrooms.
Yeah, the, the two bedrooms. So you're replacing some of the offices with the two-bedroom.
I'm gonna reduce the thirty-five hundred square feet down to roughly two thousand that the office would.
Sure, I just didn't know what, what that calculation is for the, for the septic support.
Correct. Well, it just kind of, it's hard to say right now because we don't know what type of office or what type of business is going in there. But he can't do anything that the septic doesn't meet for. It wouldn't work because part of the building permit application, that septic is on file. We have it.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? It's kind of an unknown. So for him to get started right now with getting a building permit for his house, we kinda have to take care of this use. And then if the use that he decides to rent to doesn't meet his current septic, then he would have to update his septic system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the septic is obviously important to noise and quiet enjoyment, since I'm planning to live there, is even of greater interest to me. So I, I told the, the broker, we want low-impact people. We don't want, we don't want a dance club.
It's Village. The person, the Abutter is Village. It's a Village District. It goes in, it looks like three lots, three lots back. So the next two lots behind him are Village.
So closer to Brandy Pond?
Yes.
They're also Village?
Correct. Yep. This is his right here.
But they are zoned and classified just as residential?
They're being utilized as a residential use, which is allowed in all zoning districts, but the actual zoning is Village. So if they wanted to do something different in the future, there's a potential to site plan review that they could update that. Highly unlikely, given the way that it's developed, but you never know.
Okay. I answered the question for setback.
Yeah.
I have a question about the whole ordinance situation. So if, so we're, we're making this up, or if we wrote to do this, then this is now a mixed use. Does that mean that if the commercial portion, that any potential tenant you might have, if that's something other than a professional office, would that come to the planning board again?
That is.
Or by the fact that we're saying it's now, the whole thing is mixed use, it never has to come to us again?
That is a good question. So the way I read the ordinance is that, I'm trying to get to the page of the Village District or the, hold on a second, give me a second. I anticipated that question. And if you looked at mixed use, including home occupations, residential use and non-residential uses are permitted on the same lot in the Village District. This includes uses that are otherwise allowed in the Village District. You could retire, require him to come back if you wanted to, if anything other than an office went in. Or, or you could say it's gotta meet, if they gotta meet parking, parking, they gotta meet septic and to allow something else. I guess we could also ask him what his intention is too, while he's standing right there, if it's gonna be an office or if he's got other ideas.
Well, at, at this point, the investment that I made is so that it's a commercial establishment.
Yeah.
I've had people express interest in retail. There's been a couple retail people that I don't have an interest in being in my building. So I've said, thank you, but I'm not interested in that. If it is something that's retail, again, I want it to be low-impact. I'm hoping I'm not violating any laws by saying I don't want a smoke shop in my building, but I prefer not to.
I mean, I, that, that's a professional office and under other circumstances, if somebody wanted to open a bar in there, they would have to come to us again. So I just want to ensure that if we're voting for this to now be mixed use, I would say that if somebody wants to put a bar or a restaurant in there, it needs to come back to us.
You can make that as a condition. And the way I read it, you wouldn't necessarily have to do that, but if you are not comfortable, you could make that as a condition. Because there are homes around there, we've had, well, I don't.
Can I ask the question? I guess I don't want to have too many limitations because I don't know who's gonna come to me. If I didn't go for mixed use, it's now established as commercial use with the stipulation it has to be certain types of businesses.
Yeah.
If I kept it all as commercial, do I have to come back and say, I wanna have?
If it's substantially different from what it was reviewed, so it's always been a professional office, so you have to come back for, for site plan.
If it's a healthcare office or insurance.
Change of use. Not, not necessarily an insurance because that's a professional office. Real estate's a professional office. An accountant would be a professional office. It's not the type of business, it's the use classification. So right now, you're following under professional office.
There is a whole list that I have in front of me of what's allowed in the Village District.
But you would have to change the use. And if you think this through, there's a reasoning to that. If you were to put a restaurant in, the calculation for parking spaces in a restaurant is based by the number of seats, not based on square footage. So the calculation for septic and the calculation for the number of parking spaces required, and also the intensity of the use has an impact on the site. I am saying that they could decide that the mixed use is fine and all of these uses are okay on that property, as long as you meet the septic and parking requirements. But I'm hearing that they're not a hundred percent comfortable with that. And a lot of people make that, they think commercial is commercial, I can do anything I want. It's commercial and residential is residential. It's not the case. The commercial uses are listed and described differently, and each one has different requirements for septic, parking, and other L things, depending on the intensity.
So we're not saying we would deny it. We're just saying that there would be probably some things that would have to be addressed.
Is there any way that you can give me guidelines? Because I've got a guy out scurrying under the bushes looking for a commercial person to look, you know, to reside there and run a business.
Yeah.
I'd rather give him the guidelines now as opposed to letting him waste time out talking to, I don't know what.
So the way I would, I'm just giving, this is totally opinion, the way I would handle is I would give them the Village District allowed uses and let the realtor know that anything that's a professional office, like I described, that could come in. There's no issue with that. But any of these other uses are allowed, but it potentially, the renter or yourself could come with, you could write a letter and the renter could go to planning board to allow that use. So they could sign a rental agreement contingent upon planning board approval for a restaurant, and then they could come to planning board or you could do it for them, either way. But these are the lists of the allowed uses.
That's gonna scare a whole bunch of people from wanting to go down that road.
Yeah.
That's gonna scare a whole bunch of people from wanting to go down that road. And, and I don't blame them, I would be too. I'd say, I've got a business plan and I'm not gonna know for three months or six months until I get approval.
But you would, I mean, honestly, if you were putting a restaurant or something in there, I mean, everything is so different with that, a bar, restaurant, as far as the septic needs. I mean, you, it wouldn't just be, you can't just do a plug-and-play with something that's that different.
I have a friend who promised he'd hit me with the tool before if I ever opened a bar or restaurant.
I'm just saying Naples has been known for opening bars.
I don't intend to do that, but, but I understand the concern.
Yeah. And because there are homes there, I mean, the Village is so, and there's, it's-
Well, there is, and also, right next door, I'm contending with a very loud bar and restaurant with flashing lights and overflow parking every weekend. So I'm, I'm well aware of the things that, you know, would upset people.
I actually liked this conversation because I think it's a good conversation because this is the, the challenge in, in any kind of change of use, particularly when you have a property where you don't necessarily know who the tenant's going to end up being. So I guess my question is, is out of all the lists under mixed use that are allowed, is there a group of businesses that you're considering, like retail, like retail or a professional office? And would there be a level of comfort if there was specific businesses? Trying to work, trying to work through this.
Well, maybe you could have a daycare in there and have a lot of, a lot of use of your septic.
Have a lot of traffic and-
Forty-six, page forty-six of Naples Land Use Ordinance.
The triple I's where it says the mixed use, including home occupations, that list?
Yeah, mixed use, that, the three I's is where.
I was approached by somebody wanting to put a convenience store. Again, I don't consider that low-impact, but that's me making a personal judgment where if you all have guidelines, I'd love to share that with the broker.
I mean, I'm look, I'm looking at this list, I mean, but I don't even, I mean, be, knowing the, the location, I'm not even sure what if-
A lot of these would not be realistic, given the lot size.
They're not.
Yeah, so most of it-
I think one of them is a church or a religious house.
Most of these aren't realistic because of either septic, parking, or just the lot size and meeting setbacks.
I mean, I was really just thinking about restaurant or bars because with that comes always a desire to have outside seating and da-da-da-da-da, and you just go down that road. And I just feel like if it's going to be that, I, it just needs to come to planning board. That's all, that's my whole point, that's all I'm saying, because it's a lot.
And that it would need to return to us?
Yeah, that's all. That's the kind of thing-
Again, I guess I'd ask the question because I'm saying I want to make it mixed use. I personally am gonna want it to be less active. But if I said, I'm just gonna keep it commercial, do I have restrictions as to what I can put in there? Because I am right next door to a very loud bar and restaurant that has outdoor seating and bonfires and music.
You have to come to planning board if you're changing substantially the use of what it was initially approved for, regardless of whether we were having this conversation about you wanting to make part of it residential.
There were guidelines saying it was resident, or real estate office?
It was, it was perfo, so you have to look at each one of these lists, in the list, just because it's commercial doesn't mean it's a blanket to do any of these. You have to look at each one of these as an addition, a different use. And any change of use from professional office, which was what was approved, has to be approved by the planning board, and that would be the same in any town. That's not, it's change of use. The, the benefit to mixed use is you get to have a professional, a commercial and residential use on a 40,000-square-foot lot. So that is, because in most cases, you could not, with your lot, you could not have two different commercial uses because you don't have the square footage to have two different, you'd have to have 40,000 per use. So in the mixed use scenario, you get to have two uses, one being residential and one being commercial on the same lot. But to answer your question the short, yeah, any change of use, even though they're commercial, would require planning board approval.
My understanding was, and I don't know when it ceased, but it sounds like in the last year, year and a half, there were two offices in that building.
Don't know the answer to that question. The only sign I saw was Better Homes and Garden.
We knew it as is one real estate agency in there.
There was a title company in the back.
Those are typically considered accessory to a real estate office, you know, and did we ever get permits for that?
Two, two separate businesses.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but we never, did we ever receive a permit for that? Probably not. I'm guessing that they didn't come in and ask for that, and we didn't see a sign, and what we don't know, we don't know. That's to be honest with you.
That comes to as a professional office as well.
And it's also, like you said, it's a professional office. So you could, you could have maybe more than one professional office, but you gotta, you have to have 40,000 square feet. So you couldn't have a professional office and a restaurant, or a professional office and daycare on that site.
One, one group has approached me about somebody coordinating it under their umbrella, but having a number of health, health and beauty wellness offices being run by different individuals. Somebody who's a stylist, somebody else who's an expert, somebody else who's a massage therapist.
Change of use.
What is that called?
Personal, is it, do we have personal service?
I, I did bring up for anybody that needs to see it, what we're talking about for a year.
You got a pair of binoculars?
I tried to bring it bigger, Robert. Would you like me to put it over here and see if you can turn around and read it?
It's called a service business, and-
I'm kidding.
Service business is not listed in the Village District. That would be considered a service business.
But there was something down a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's just the up that's-
Yeah, that's the top of it, and then there's the rest of them. I'm looking at the others on-
Does that fall under something else? Because you have it. Or is that grant, is it essential services?
Essential services typically utilities, munis, that type of thing. You have to look at the definitions of how they're defined.
I got chastised over the weekend by a Naples resident who said I was guilty by trying to make part of that building residential, that I was guilty of doing what so many other people are doing in Naples that he doesn't like, and that is driving all the commercial businesses away by turning them into residents.
Yep. That is, that's a holdout from a lot of towns. Did not allow any residential component in their commercial districts. A lot of towns in Maine's had that philosophy until after COVID, when people stopped working in office space. And so then a lot of towns revisited their ordinance and said, we will allow mixed use on the same-sized lot because they would rather have something in there than have vacant properties. So I mean, that, but that is-
We just have to be all residents.
That is very typical attitude. I've worked in Gloucester, I worked in Gray, and they had the same thing where they did not want single families or any kind of residential component in the commercial district. It's changed in some of the towns. So this, this provision allows to have both on one lot. So I think, my short answer is that there's a lot of lists, there's a lot of things listed here. Service is not, service professionals is not, service, personal services is not listed. We call it here-
Health, beauty is not?
Service business is what that's considered. And it is not listed as one of the allowed uses in the Village.
So whomever I get who's interested, they're gonna have to come before the board and ask for approval?
You or the, or that person, if it's anything other than a professional office. Now, that professional office is a big scope, though. I mean, there are a lot of different types of professional offices, like I said. Could be an accountant, it could be a H&R Block, it could be, you know, realtor, it could be, it could be a lot of things.
Engineering company.
Engineering company.
And retail?
Retail is a separate use, and that's why I asked that question. Is there any other uses on this list that you would be comfortable with under the blanket of mixed use that he could potentially do if he has sufficient parking and sufficient septic? I guess that's what I'm asking you.
I may be living in a very large house.
I made it bigger, Robert.
Wow, it's too big now.
Just let me know if you need me to put it up or down.
I mean, I see nothing in here that, given his view, that's objectionable. I mean, a veterinary clinic, I don't know if you'd like to have dogs coming in and out.
It's interesting that's into, that's-
Veterinary, but not human, healthcare? There's also medical services.
We love our dogs.
Doesn't that say medical?
So the ordinances in Naples-
Medical marijuana registered caregiver.
Yeah. So all the ordinances in Naples are voted on by the residents of Naples. In order to change them, it has to go to town meeting or referendum. So these have all been voted on by town residents, and it is what it is, basically.
But if it falls under these, these categories, then it's okay? Or does it still have to come and be voted on or approved?
That's up to the planning board, that's where we're, that's where we're at right here.
Am I a test case here?
No, you're not the test case, you're not the test case. But it's just a unique situation where you're going, you're going from, you're not going to, most of the time, people come in and say, I want to change it from professional office to X. And in this case, you're wanting to change it to mixed use, which could include any of these X's here. And there's some reservations I'm hearing on the board with things like, I don't know if a bar or a restaurant would be appropriate on that location, is what I'm hearing. And so my question to them was, is there, is there a handful of these that they would be comfortable with including in this approval or not? I guess that's my question.
And I think if we gave a handful, that would limit what, unfortunately, what, what you would be looking for. It would limit your party.
Well, I meant a handful without having to come back to planning board.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, I get that, but it also kind of restricts him for what he can, what he can look for. So it's kind of, we're in a little catch-22. We say, you can look for these five people, or five businesses, and I, and I found this one, this is the best solution, and I have to come back before the board anyway. So I don't know that it's kind of fair to give him just a handful.
I mean, part of me in, in saying no to a smoke shop says, I wouldn't want a smoke shop there, but a convenience store, I don't know. I mean, I said no, but it's, no one else is rushing to put a real estate office there. I'm reconsidering that, gee.
When we make decisions, we have to make decisions for the next people that are gonna be there.
Sure.
So that's kind of what the, the board has to consider as well, not just what you're comfortable with, but what maybe the next tenant or in the back of the building or in the front of the building is gonna be there. So that's kind of what we have to, with, with, to make sure that the business fits for that building.
So, so I guess back to my application to make it mixed use, is it okay for that to go forward?
Which is really what we're here for.
Yeah, it's okay for it to go forward. It's, it sounds like what I'm hearing is as long as the, the front part is professional office and the back part is residential, as shown on this plane.
At this time, and if we need to change that for a different business that might be going in there, then we'll need to come back to the board.
Yeah. We're not denying it, we're just saying if it's something other than that, I have to come back. And the scope of that review would be limited to just the, that part of the building? You know, what, what you're gonna put in there?
And, and I'll ask only because if I don't have someone come forward at some point, I've gotta say, I'm gonna have a building that's gonna sit empty because no one's coming with an approved use. Could I make the entire building residential?
That would be a change of use to residential. And you would not be able to have two single families on that lot because of the lot size. What you could have, and this was the thing that I thought would happen to this property, is you could have a single-family home and an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory could only be 800 square feet. So you would come back, it would be pretty simple. You'd just be saying, hey, you know, I was unsuccessful finding a commercial, so I don't want to be mixed use anymore, I just want to be residential. And then that would be an ADU. So your house would get bigger and your ADU would be the 800 square feet. That is completely allowed under the Affordable Housing Act from the state. So that's an option too.
With the multi-family dwelling, that's, that's acceptable use here.
It's not, well, multi, but he doesn't have a lot, enough lot per dwelling unit. He doesn't have enough, he's only got an acre. He only has an acre. So if you go to the next page, the dimensional requirements, it talks about how much you need.
40,000 square feet?
No, you need more than that, hold on.
Per, per-
Additional single-family dwelling?
Yeah, hold on.
Duplex dwelling, 30,000 square feet per dwelling.
Per dwelling unit, that's 60,000.
Or multi-family dwelling, 20,000?
Plus 10,000 comp space. He doesn't have it. So you have to have 60,000 square feet for a duplex. So the only scenario by which he could do residential residential would be a single family with an associated ADU, which is what I thought would happen. I thought that front cube would end up being someone's ADU, and the back would be the house, or vice versa. Because that was asked several times. So that would be, you're abandoning, you're, it's, the problem is, is once you, I think this is the big overarching thing. Once you have a site plan on a site, any variations to that site plan have to come back to planning board because it's a planning board approve, this lot has had a planning board approval. So once you change, when you change that, and that's any town, you have a main, that's not just Naples, once you make a change to an approved site plan, it's basically coming back to planning board. So you have to kind of make a decision if you want to proceed with this application as submitted tonight.
I do right now, but I'm trying to just think forward and backward of what I may have to address at some point. I'm giving my broker a limited range of who he can talk to.
While we're at it, and please weigh in on this, you had submitted an application to the Board of Appeals for a setback reduction for a garage, and that was denied at the meeting. I had put in here, if you guys had noticed, that he would be allowed an accessory dwelling, accessory structure to this, to the, to the single-family that's being proposed to allow, so he would not have to come back to planning board for that as well, as long as he either A gets a Board of Appeal, like if he decides to go back to the Board of Appeals, or meet the setbacks, one or the other, so that he would not have to come back for that as well. The only thing that he would need to do is once that's determined where that garage is gonna sit, that he would put that on the site, show that garage on the site plan, and you guys could sign a new one at a later date. And we'd put it on as a planning board business signature of, you know, site plan with the accessory structure. Because I was trying to eliminate, the, the timing of this is tough because he wants to get going on pulling his building permit so he can make his house or make his improvements. So I was trying to make it so he didn't have to come back. I anticipated he would need to come back for a different use other than professional office. I didn't want him to come back for a garage for his house, if possible. So I might as well lay it all out there on the table, but that garage isn't sighted yet.
Right. And, and my understanding is it's gotta be 20 feet, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that being on here.
Is the parking area in the back of the state, 11 spaces, 20 on state?
What I would like to do, again, depending on who wants to be my commercial renter, I would love to eliminate a whole bunch of the asphalt, at least back in the back half towards Brandy Pond, because it's, it's an asphalt jungle.
Because it's blacktop.
It is blacktop, yeah.
It just made me think of if we're putting up a garage, does that increase the impervious surface of the area?
It would, it has to go wherever the blacktop is, that's the only place the 20-foot setback is. So that would remove some of the blacktop, but I'd like to remove probably another 20% if I could.
All right, Kathy, so what did we need from us?
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is, I'm looking at my, my motion right now. I think there's a number nine in there that, what we just talked about, that he, he would have the ability to remove impervious surface if he wanted to. That way, that way he doesn't have to come back again to, to do that. So I think that would be number nine. He can remove, the APK is allowed to remove impervious surface as long as there's sufficient parking for all tenants. Or, I think that works for all uses on the site. So I'm drafting a number nine. Impervious surface. The applicant can remove impervious surface without planning board approval. I think it's that simple. Obviously, he'll have to keep parking that he needs. And then I'm looking at number eight, and I think that needs to be wordsmithed a little bit better. Instead of any additional division of the existing structure for new residential commercial units, I think any.
For a change of use.
Any change of use. I don't want to say for additional commercial units because his comment is, could he have two or three professional offices in there? I don't see why not.
I mean, a change of use.
So I think it should just be any change of use requires the limited site plan review by the planning board to assure all the criteria and standards continue to be met. So I would just change that to any change of use, other than professional, the residential and professional office. So I'm not, I don't think we're getting everything that you wanted, but we're getting your garage on there, too. So we're trying to work with you the best that we can.
Thank you. No, I mean, it's just clarifying. It's not that I'm not getting what I want. Ideally, I would love an office and something that's quiet, that no one's there on weekends and.
I also added the words limited site plan review, which would narrow the scope to just that. So if someone had to come back, we could get it on, agenda as quickly as possible. We still have to meet the deadlines because we still have to do our butter notices and all of that. And that's really the biggest thing, is that butters do have the rights to express their opinions on a change of use, and that's why that's really there, to be honest with you, is we notify butters and we advertise accordingly. So if you decided to come in with a veterinary clinic, you know, and you're showing, and also there would be additional, there'd be probably initial signage or additional lighting and those types of components, but we would only limit our review to the changes that you are proposing. So if you were going to add lighting, or you were going to add a sign, or if you were going to add something other, or you were going to change the parking, or you're going to divide it differently, or that would be, we would limit the review to that. So this is actually a very limited review. If this were a brand-new site plan, you'd be opening up stormwater, all of these other things. So we're trying to keep this as tight as we can and as limited as we can.
So you're saying I'd need to come back with that if I get another real estate office in there?
Nope.
Or I don't need to come back if it's a professional office?
Yep. Or a combination of professional offices. If you divide, now, if you decide to divide it into different units in there, you would have to get a different building permit.
Sure.
So I think we have a draft motion.
I'll move to approve the request from Wayne Denbar for a change of use from professional office to mixed use on a parcel located at 692 Roosevelt Trail, as shown on tax map, Lot U 02/035 in the Village Zone Main District, with the following findings affecting conditions of approval. One, this approval is limited to the change of use from professional office to mixed use, as described in the submittals and presented by the applicant at the June 3 planning board meeting. Two, per 902.1 GNF, a limited site plan review is required when there is a proposed change of use for a building or site that previously received site plan review. The scope of the review is limited to the proposed changes. Three, at the June 3 2025 planning board meeting waivers were granted for the following: Submission requirements not received as part of the application found in the Naples Land Use Ordinance 907. B Naples Land Use Ordinance 908, Criteria and Standards 908, 1 through 11. No significant changes to the previously approved site plans or proposed. Four, the planning board found that the waiver request met the criteria found in 905.1 A through D of the Naples Land Use Ordinance. With the granting of the above waivers, the planning board found the application is complete. The applicant is allowed one additional two-car garage utilized as an accessory to the residential use, provided that it meets all the dimensional standards found in 504.5D Village District Zone. A building permit reviewed and approved by Naples Code Enforcement Officer is required prior to construction. Seven, any additional structures beyond what is described in Condition 6 requires planning board approval. Eight, so this is where we changed it. So any change of use other than residential and professional office would require planning board approval. Is that what you had?
Yeah.
Okay. And nine, the applicant will be allowed to remove impervious surface, so long as there is enough parking for the uses.
Without planning board approval.
Without planning board approval.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I have to keep writing. I got most of the number nine until the very end. Okay, so I have a motion by Martina and a second by Marty. Any more discussion for it? No, the whole favor, 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quick, just a quick question. Can I start making changes to convert it to a residence?
Yes, with the building permit.
With building permit?
Yeah. And you can make changes to the commercial side, too, for an office, if there's a configuration changed.
Right.
Both of those with building permits.
Yeah, that would require building permits, too. If they're adding walls, taking down walls, doing it.
And that's when they'll have the opportunity to review their, you have a subject plan on file and all of that.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
And I'll have a notice of decision for you probably next week.
I'm sorry?
I'll have a notice of decision for you from the planning board probably next week, and feel free to come in if you have questions.
Thank you.
The permits just submitted to me. They're all mine, too.
So what's the project?
Next, under new business, item 6B, is a request by Dennis Liberty for a modification of an approved major site plan to add additional office space located at 236 Roosevelt Trail, as shown on map Lot U 05/24-01-A in the Commercial Zoning District. Good evening. Liberty, good evening.
Yeah, I plan on putting an additional office space, as you can see from my high school drafting class drawings in front of you. I did the best I could, give you an idea of what we're doing, pretty simple. Put a 20-foot container on top of a 40-foot container. That's already done and finished and approved by the town.
So as much as I have, is this going to be visible from 302 and the butters?
I don't think the butters are going to see it because there's foliage, you know, all around. I don't know if you're going to see it from 302.
I looked, I drove by slowly to see if I could see it. I couldn't see it.
If you do, you're not going to see much of it.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that's a requirement, not be able to see it. There's a little series of different requirements coming into play.
Okay, yeah.
So what is the height of completion?
It's going to be 19, let's see, 9, 17 feet.
And it's currently how tall?
It's nine. I'm putting an eight foot on top.
Would you like me to start?
Sure, Kathy.
So I put the existing conditions, I treated this one a little bit different. We have the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, just to be aware, so the public's aware that storage is no longer allowed as a use. It was removed as part of a ordinance revision that was voted on by the town of Naples residents. And so this is a grandfathered use, as far as the storage. I consider the office that's there as an accessory to that storage facility, so I don't see that as a separate use. I see that as an accessory to the storage facility. So he's proposing to add additional office space on the top. It's another storage container. The access, I believe you said, would be from the exterior?
Yes.
You're not putting a slab, you're putting two footers and posts to support that, correct? That's what I gathered from the drawing and talking to you.
Right. Well, there'll be concrete under it.
Concrete under the foot, the footers for the posts?
Yes.
But are you planning on putting concrete under that?
Yeah, as the plan shows.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be 12 by 16 underneath. It's going to extend to the entrance of the existing office and go underneath the overhang of the new one.
So the other thing that has changed since you came to the planning board, first of all, the use went away, and second of all, there were district design standards that were added, and I listed those in the memo, and those are new since you came the last time. And there's a whole list of design standards that are required, and so I think that's where the majority of your discussion is going to be. Once again, I limited the scope of this review to the proposed change, not the entire site. The other thing that you could consider is, is everything completed that was on the first site plan. But other than that, it'd be, is everything completed on the first site plan that was approved? And the scope of the change that has been proposed, and whether or not that meets those criteria. And so I think that's where, I think that's where on number four, the commercial district design standards, I think that's where the majority of the question is.
So I also drove by there today, and I was unclear on whether or not I'd be able to see it. I did see things up higher, up on the hill. I mean, they are visible from 302. I don't know how you would make a storage container meet our new district design standards. So, and you don't have to meet them if it's not visible from any public way. I would, I need to be assured that it is not visible. And I'm, you know, the burden of proof is on the applicant, and I don't know if it actually, none of what happened at that site looks the way I thought it would look in the first place when we did this actually, an actual year ago today, I think it was, that we approved it.
Oh, no, it was two or three.
It was last June.
Two or three years.
No, it was last year that we approved those containers.
I was approved before Roosevelt Trail was approved. I mean, Roosevelt's storage.
I watched the video again.
I got occupancy.
It was actually June 7, 20, June 7, 2020. What year are we in? 25?
We're in 25.
It was, it wasn't last year. I saw it. Oh, my God.
I know, I just got approved last year.
It might have just got finished.
I think it's just because of, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got finished last year with the.
None of it looks the way I thought it would look. I don't think any of it looks the way we thought we weren't going to see it or whatever. But, so, I'm not going to make that mistake twice. I need to know for sure that it's not visible, because stacked storage containers is in no way meet what the spirit or the letter of this ordinance is, and nobody in Naples, I think, wants to see stacked storage containers. That's, so I'm going to have to see it. I need to understand for sure that it's not visible, that I just don't know how else I could do this.
Two, one of the questions that I had on it was, under discussion items, under item three for proposed conditions, it says that, just a typo for one, it says it's going to be stacked on top of an eight by 20, it should be an eight by 40 container.
Yes, that's a typo.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that's clear. But it's another eight, eight-foot wide by 20-foot long storage container on top of that for more office space.
Right.
What's the bottom going to be used for? Is it going to continue to be office space?
That's currently office and reception, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it currently is. Second, what is it going to continue to be?
Yeah, yeah, I might, you know, I might store some stuff, you know, my own personal stuff, you know. You just never have enough space once you get in there.
Well, it could be storage related to his business, or his office, file cabinets, that type of stuff, as long as both of those storage containers are accessory to his business. I mean, most storage places have some sort of an office. But they would have to be accessory to that business.
Okay. But another rental unit, it's.
It wouldn't be another rental unit. It would be, yeah.
Yeah, that's my intent.
Okay. I think that we could probably get an idea of visible from the road if something was put, a pole or something with a flag on top of it, on top of the existing building, that we could see if it was visible from 302, because that seems to be the big concern, is whether this is going to be visible stacked on top, even if it's up further on the hill. So I think something like that may help out, the board make a decision whether or not this is going to be something that we allow in town.
Right.
So kind of like we'd have a sidewalk and have things staked out.
Right.
Like we were talking about earlier in the other meeting, that we could have something like that attached to the building or put up, so we can get a visual for it from down on the road.
Right, right. When this is completed, for your information, I do have proposals to have it artist painted to look like a log cabin siding.
Okay.
So, yeah, that would be the next question, is if it doesn't, if it doesn't, if it is visible from the road, how could he meet some of these? And I think he can meet some of these, like natural colors or earth tones. I mean, some of these he can meet as visible, but if there's some that do not meet this, what can he do to make it meet this, I guess would be the question.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the plan. I just got the proposal a couple of days ago. I have a photo on my phone, if you care to see it. It's pretty interesting.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's subjective, right? Windows and transparent openings, he might be able to do that. I think he may have done that on the first.
What's that?
Windows, it says windows or openings.
Yeah.
Materials that have texture or pattern, you know, I mean, some of these he can meet, even with the storage container. It's just we need to first determine whether or not he has to meet them, I guess, by doing a sidewalk and having a stick stuck up there with a flag on the top or something, so you can see what you can see from the travel way, basically.
Because I think that would be a first step to see, and then we can move forward with a couple of these other things. So I think a definite sidewalk should be considered for this.
So I think you're saying before you want to do anything, you want to schedule a sidewalk for this one?
I guess that would be the best thing for us to see.
I need to understand what we're dealing with.
See it visually. And then we could, well, I mean, because then if it's not visible, then we don't have to worry about all these things. But if it is visible, then we could help you out with the.
Well, the fact that I'm going to paint it, have it painted to look like log siding, you know, we can't just put that in there regardless, that we cover it.
There's different.
It's more than just that.
There's breaks, there's, you know, there's multiple things that we're looking at.
Roofing, shape of roof.
Yeah.
Well, it's flat.
And what's the length of it again?
20.
Eight or 20. Well, you can have a 20, you can have a flat roof for 20 feet.
20 feet.
Yeah, you can.
Or just have to go through that list.
Yeah. I just don't think painting it is going, is an answer necessarily if it's visible. I don't think that's going to give us the look that precipitated this entire change to our ordinance on how things look in the commercial zone.
So since, it doesn't sound like you're requiring additional submittals, what you're requiring is a sidewalk, we could do that before the, for the next meet, before the next meeting, potentially.
We have to do, we should do a sidewalk.
Right, right. I'm just saying, we could do it in two weeks, because he doesn't have anything else to submit. He just needs to make it ready for us to look at.
At the next meeting, not before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
I can't do, before the next meeting?
Yeah.
No, I can't do that. I won't be back until Monday.
No, not before, I mean, before, actually, what is the next meeting?
The night of the meeting.
June.
Yeah, oh, the night of the, oh, I see. Yeah, the night, yeah, I'm sorry, before, like at 5:00. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
17. So you have to advertise? Well, we do have to advertise.
We have to advertise for the sidewalk. Can we, can we get that?
Either July 1 or July 15.
We have the advertising, the notification requirements that we have, so it would be July 1.
Is it, if someone's going to figure out there's going to be a board members for July 1, because going into the Fourth of July holiday weekend, and we had that issue last year with.
Hold on, let me.
Minimum focus for.
Let me just check site, site plan review, just see what it says about the site plan.
I mean, I'll be in town, so I'll be here.
I'm here.
Oh, I know you.
I'm here.
All right.
Well, just in case, you just never know when people go out of town. I don't want to.
Just looking at your administration, what it says in site plan for your town.
I have one more question for you.
I have one more question for you. Is the septic, is the septic system, the wastewater, is that installed at this point?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that was in the notes. I bet that's, that's it.
Is it insufficient for this additional space?
Well, there's no additional load because it's just my place. It's my office.
Not adding like five employees or anything like that?
No, no. I'm trying to, this is just a retirement gig for me, you know?
Yeah.
July, it would have, it could, the earliest we could do it would be July 1 because in your site, your site plan's different than subdivision. That's why I'm checking. Notice of the date, time and place of such hearing shall be published in a newspaper or local circulation place at least 10 days in advance. And we can't make that for two weeks from now because of the submission deadline passed. So it would have to be July 1 would be the earliest that we could bring him back if we're going to have enough people. So July 1 at 5:00 P.M. And if he comes back for July 1 at 5:00 P.M., do we want to schedule, go ahead and schedule that as a public hearing for that as well? We're advertising for a sidewalk at 5, public hearing at 6?
For this?
For this application.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. And so now, since it sounds like we are meeting on July 1, we would probably do the same for the subdivision. Schedule that one as well.
The sidewalk?
Yeah. Or can we fit two into one? We could put him as the 15th.
I'd rather not do two on the sidewalk.
Okay. All right. So subdivision, the 15th, because he's going to be waiting for his DEP permit anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so subdivision on the 15th and him on the 1st. We got it. So we'll advertise for those appropriately as a sidewalk and a public hearing at 6:00 P.M. for both of those.
The sidewalk, do you want to do 5?
I think for this one, 5 is fine. I think subdivision will be 4:45 just because we might need a little extra travel time and tech removal time.
So for the sidewalk, we'll just need something on, you know, that's sad to see.
Be a piece of wood with a bicycle flag on top.
Flag up there for you.
So I think at this point, we could table this application until the next meeting. Nothing's going to change really on my mental. I'll just add the sidewalk on there.
Motion to table.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Dennis Liberty's request for modification of an approved major site plan to addition, I'm sorry, to additional office space located 236 Roosevelt Trail, shown on map lot U 05 slash 24 dash 0 dash A in the commercial zone. Who made that motion, Marty? Marty made it, second by Martina? All in favor? 4-0. Thank you. Sorry about that, but
Okay.
We'll get a chance to look at what the project's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned that I lost two years. What's that assign up?
Time flies, Martina. Item seven is public participation for any planning board matters. Anybody from the public have a thing here? No? Okay. Okay, we'll move that on that to other planning board business.
Can I just bring something up as a result of our discussion earlier? I'm wondering if we need to change an ordinance that allows for personal services in the Village District. I don't know why it's not in that list. I think that's an oversight.
I don't know that it's an oversight.
Or was it on purpose? I can't remember now.
I don't know. We would have to go back and look at the history and see if that was intentional. Those would be grandfathered. I don't know if there was a specific discussion as why they wouldn't want to allow that. It's, but what's odd is the fact that things like veterinarian, that's kind of like a service. So did they specifically say, yeah, we want that, but we don't want other types of personal services? Is that related to maybe you made a new use for massage or, you know what I mean? There could have been some kind of division there that I'm not aware of as to why that would be that way. So definitely something that we need to research as to why. And that also fits into the conversation is why isn't mixed use allowed in commercial now? Now, you can't do mixed use either in commercial. So this is, that's another, and that's a holdover from the days when they only wanted commercial and commercial zoning. But you have a lot of grandfathered mixed use out there with a residential component and a commercial component. So those are bigger discussions that we can run by the select board if that's something they want us to work on for ordinance review.
I'd still know if you wanted to even add it to the list for
I don't know if I want to add it to the list for November. No, but for the next round, because we have enough already for November. And I think that's related to our comp plan, to be honest with you too, to kind of reevaluate, because things have changed since 2006, right?
Yeah.
So not too many, it's very hard to find a real estate office or a lawyer's office with actually someone in it. Usually you're making an appointment and then you're showing up, maybe. So the world has changed a little bit. So.
I don't ever recall a discussion to not allow that.
I know. I mean, I, when we changed the ordinances and we included that line that says if it's not listed, it's prohibited. I want to somehow find what was there before that. Was it, was it not even in there at that point?
There should be, there should be an archived, there should be an archived version of what the ordinance was before.
Because that was somewhat recent that we changed it to that. I want to say like, and I'm not good on years apparently, but I want to say that was like two years ago. Oh, no, it could have been 10, no. Two years ago. So the one right before that, that would have had what it was.
Okay.
So I'd be interested to see.
I can see if I can find those. Michelle keeps an attested copy of each ordinance change somewhere in the vault, so I'll have to ask her.
It's in the big binder box, I think.
And that leads me to other, another thing that's kind of related to that is that in a lot of towns, they have a list of uses that are allowed with code officer approval and then another list that requires bumps it up to site plan. So that gives some people some flexibility, like what he was talking about tonight, where these X, Y, and Z, you can do with a building permit as long as you meet plumbing code and all the other. And these uses require, these more intensive uses require site plan review with the planning board. Part of a larger discussion, it's also related to comp plan. It's also related to, you know, just trying to make the process simplified, I guess. Which is the trend. We're hearing a lot of that in other towns around us.
We did something like that, I think, recently, right here with allowing, I think it was code enforcement to approve of some things
As a condition, yeah.
Without coming before the board.
Yeah, and that's why I added the garage tonight so that you could say, hey, you know what, he can get his garage without coming back. Just send, bring us a new plan to have for it. So. Okay, that's all I've got. Oh, we have to sign. Please sign the MLM boat storage. The chair already signed the notice of decision for that one as well as the other one that we had, and that was for the Caleb Kennedy lot split for the subdivision. You already signed his subdivision plans at the last meeting, but the change, there was a, remember there was a change to the this one? They added the class 3 buffer and they added that they can't remove any additional vegetation to one side. So this is the new plan with the changes that you requested at the meeting. And that's it.
So we need to sign that one, right?
I think you reduce yourself for the
For the boat?
Yes.
The boat one, which you
That's the only one that's signing?
Yeah, that's the only one they're signing. The other one's done.
So we have, it looks like that day there was Doug and Martina, Jimmy Allen, Marty, and Jen was here.
Okay, so we need to get Jen and Jimmy, but the three of you can sign, please.
Motion so happens we have, I have a minute.
Your next meeting is the 17th.
Right. We do. It should be a light meeting.
And then the 10 is motion two?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?